Yes, sir. Yes, yes, we are just gonna instead of starting with Article Three, start with a different article which may be Twenty Four, Twenty Five and Twenty Six or Twenty Five and Twenty Six. So, any more discussion? Okay, so the, we are voting now on whether we will vote to take up, art, to include, add Article Twenty Four to this gentleman's motion to take up out of order. So, all those in favor of amending the motion, so we're not voting on to take things out of order, we're mo, moving on what we're deciding to take up out of order, okay? Is that clear? So, all those in favor of having the motion be to take up Articles Twenty Four, Twenty Five and Twenty Six out of order, please signify by raising your cards. Okay. Okay, opposed? Okay, I'm gonna see it one more time. In favor of changing the motion? Thank you, opposed? Thank you. I'm gonna say the motion, the motion carries. The motion carries, so now the motion as amended is on the floor for discussion, meaning that I'll, I'll take discussion on the motion to take up Twenty Four, Twenty Five and Twenty Six out of order. Any discussion on that? Yes.
Todd Shea, Senate Road, I'd just like to clarify that Article Twenty Four, when you vote on it, is independent of Article Twenty Five and Twenty Six. They are not related.
Any other discussion? Okay, so now we are voting on whether we will start with Articles Twenty Four, Twenty Five and Twenty Six. Okay, all those in favor of starting with those three articles? Thank you, opposed? Okay, so, motion carries, and so the first article, instead of Article Three, we're gonna start with Article Twenty Four. Okay, Article Twenty Four, "To see if the town pursuant to Twenty Three MRSA subsection thirty, Thirty Twenty Five, will vote to accept the dedication made by Oak Ridge Terrace LLC, title and fee simple on strips of land known as Laura Lane and Oak Ridge Terrace, further described in the warranty deed, see attachment as Exhibit C, and to accept and establish town ways on said strips of land." Okay, so Article Twenty Four has been moved and seconded as written. Any discussion on Article Twenty Four? Uh, yes.
Good evening, Michael Houlihan, resident of Oak Ridge Terrace in Arundel. This Article Twenty Four really has nothing at all whatsoever to do with Twenty Five and Twenty Six. I wanna make that very clear. I'm not sure why we're lumping them together at all. These are separate communities, separate neighborhoods. Twenty Four has nothing to do with Twenty Five and Twenty Six. But because we're going now, I'll go through my spiel here and explain to you what's going on. We live in a subdivision that was built recently, and as part of the approval of the subdivision, our developer had to go through a process where everything was approved every step of the way. A independent engineering firm was hired at the developer's expense to ensure that the roads in the subdivision were built to town standards. And this article has to do with approving Laura Lane and Oak Ridge Terrace as townways. Laura Lane has been a road that's been around for decades. Um, Oak Ridge Terrace is a newer road, but they are grouped together because the developer for the Oak Ridge Terrace subdivision reinforced and paved Laura Lane as part of the subdivision plan. So, we are asking the town to vote in favor of Article Twenty Four so that Laura Lane and Oak Ridge Terrace are accepted as townways. They are built to town standards. It has been certified by engineers. In order for this article to even be here today, we had to go through a petition process that required all sorts of documentation to be submitted to the town, including certifications by engineers licensed in Maine. So, we're talking about five to six tenths of a mile of roadway that we're asking you to accept as townway. We have many children that live in the neighborhood, and they're gonna benefit from these roads being townways, especially when it comes time for a bus stop to be established in the neighborhood. So, I'd like you guys to think about, if you were in our position and you wanted roadways to be accepted by the town because it makes your community better, what would you do? So, we're asking you to vote in favor or yes for Article Twenty Four. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there other discussion? Yes, I'll recognize this woman.
Diane Robbins-Mokas, Arundel, Maine. Before I, before I stop my questions, let me be clear, I didn't ask for Twenty Four because I wanted to lump them together. I was trying to be considerate, knowing that there were a lot of people from Twenty Four, Twenty Five and Twenty Six that were here. I have not made up my mind about Twenty Four yet because I have some questions. So, I'm gonna direct my questions to the selectmen or to the moderator, or my concerns, I guess, and then they can tell me whether or not it can be fixed. So, under the exhibits, and I don't know who did the exhibits, but under the exhibits, on, under Exhibit A, paragraph one, the last sentence, it says, "Subject to easement rights of others in Laura Lane." I suspect that this is because everybody that lives in Laura Lane has access to the road, but I wanted clarification of what the easement was. That's all my question was.
Is there someone here who can address that? Or wishes to? Can you repeat the question?
Okay. The first page of the documentation, Exhibit C, it says Exhibit A. Paragraph one, it says that this is, "And recorded in the York County Register of Deeds, book and page, subject to the easement rights of others in Laura Lane." I just wanted clarification that they all had easements because they all had driveways going to this road.
Are you able to answer that? Or do you understand the question? Yes. Yeah, please.
Yeah, yeah, yes.
If you can answer, come stand here.
Hello, Susan Senate, original, um, one of the people that lived on Laura Lane when it was a private way before the developer took it over. We owned the road. When we signed our, um, rights to let them build on, and to pave Laura Lane, we signed away our sections of the front of the road so he could have the road to do the paving and to make it up to legal statements. So, we initially owned it all, and we had to sign away the front part of Laura Lane. Laura Lane was a separate, private road, and then the developer had us sign those away so he could create Oak Ridge Terrace and up.
Okay.
So, that's what that means. So, it's written in the deeds that it was ours. We signed it to him so he could do it.
Thank you very much for that.
You might wanna stick around. Now, now I need a clarification. On the same page, Exhibit A, paragraph one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, paragraph eight, it says, "Thence general, thence generally northeasterly on a curve to the left of the arc, so on and so forth, to a granite monument and the southwesterly comber." I believe these are supposed to be corner, and my question is, is this a substantial change or is this something that we can change in the document?
Yeah, sure, certainly.
So, Exhibit C of the town warrant is a scan of, sorry. It's a scan of the warranty deed that transfers ownership of Laura Lane and Oak Ridge Terrace over to the town. That was one of the documents that had to be submitted with the petition for townway acceptance. When this document was added to the town warrant, it must have been scanned with some sort of word-to-text software. This is not an actual photocopy or an exact copy of the warranty deed that was submitted. So, you're gonna get several instances of this where an O or an R got scanned as an M. And we could probably go through the whole document and find things like that. But if you compare it with the actual original warranty deed that was submitted with the petition, it's not gonna have these same errors. It's basically just a description of the land that the roads sit on that was put together by a surveyor licensed in Maine and an attorney. It's good to go, the original option. If we're looking at this scanned version, we're gonna continue to go and find examples like this over and over again.
Are you saying that this is a scanned version and there's an original that?
There is an original, there's some type of text scan that occurred that's making an O and an R together look like an M, which is really nonsignificant.
I got one too. We do. We did.
Sounds like it's a OCR or scanning error.
Right, but I'm not being difficult, but we are voting on what's in front of us. So, if what we have in front of us, I was simply asking, is this considered a substantive change? Or is this not? If it's not, then I'm gonna point out where the issues are, and people can fix them, and the town can fix this before we do anything more with it. I don't have an issue at moving it forward, but I don't wanna move forward something that has a bunch of misspellings in it, whether it was done by a photocopier or whether it was in the original document, because we didn't get the original document.
Yeah. Keith, you wanna play in?
Well, the original documents in my office, and as, as Michael was explaining, it was just scanned to be put in as an exhibit onto the warrant. We have the original, it's been signed, it's in the office, ready for action by this board tonight.
So, that document should be here in this room, because when I ask these questions, you should be able to say, is it spelled right in the document or not? Because before I vote, I'm sorry, I've been in town for forty-four years, I take town meeting very seriously, and I don't wanna getting caught into any situation because it was a misspelling and it's happened before. So, if the original document has it correctly, then I'm okay. I'm just gonna check it off and continue on. Because it's on a lot of pages and in a lot of paragraphs. Is that the original? Yeah, it's not even, they're not even on the same page. Nineteen thirty-seven fifty? Twenty-eight? It'd have been nice if somebody gave this to me before.
I mean, I, I.
All right, so the first one does say corner. So, I'm hoping that the rest of them do. Maybe you can help me out and just look at the page and paragraph and just tell me what it says.
Okay, so I, I think you've made the point, is there another point you wanna make?
Now, there's, what I'm saying is, this is, this, this has several of those combers, corners. Then on Exhibit C, I think it's Page Three, under Oak Ridge Terrace, should be the very first paragraph under Oak Ridge Terrace. The last sentence.
Okay, so I, I understand that your, your, your point is that this is not an exact copy of the warranty deed and you're, you're questioning that. So, I don't think we need to go through type, you know, error by error to go, but you've made your point. Is there anything else you'd like to comment on?
But is it a substantive change or not? Because if it's not on, if it's misspelled on that one and misspelled here, then that's an issue. If they've got the same thing I do, that's okay. But we should at least verify that it has these errors fixed in the original document. Unless you want me to vote on something, which I won't do. I won't vote on a document if it's got misspelling.
All right, so I'm gonna recognize the next person, somebody. You've spoken already, I'll recognize this woman here.
My name is Susan Roth, and I live on the Senate Road. And since Diane has so many questions, I move that we move on to Twenty Five and Twenty Six and take up Twenty Four right afterwards, once she's had a chance to examine the document to her satisfaction and look at all the typos and.
So, your motion is to take up, to stop, pass over this, go to Twenty Five, Twenty Six and go back to Twenty Four?
Yes.
Is there a second for that motion? Okay. So, this, again, taking up out of order requires a two-thirds vote. Is there any, hang on, hey? Um, is there any, that works really well. Is there any discussion on the motion? I was just checking whether it's debatable, and it is. Yes, but is there a discussion, any discussion? It's been moved and seconded to postpone Twenty Four till after Twenty Six. Yes, sir. Oh, yeah. Were you, did you wanna say something? Okay. Okay. So, I recognize you.
My name is Stephen Hammond, and I move that we, I've asked that we move that question, table it, until she has a chance to read it and go on to the other questions.
That's the motion on the floor. So, you're in, you support the motion?
Yeah.
Okay. Any other discussion? Okay, so, we are voting on whether to pa, yes. Okay, yeah, and, and I'm calling the, I'm going to the vote right now. So, the motion is to pause talking on Twenty Four, take up Twenty Five, Twenty Six and go back to Twenty Four. Okay? So, if you're in favor of that, it's two-thirds vote required. See that? Okay, opposed? Okay, so the motion carries. So, we are, I don't know what the term is, but we are gonna pause on Twenty Four uh, and move on to Article Twenty Five. Okay? So, Article Twenty Five, gonna read it. "In the event," no, sorry, no. Wait a minute. Oh, "In the event the select board approves the order of discontinuance of a portion of Clearview Drive, shall the town vote pursuant to Twenty Three MRSA subsection Thirty Twenty Six dash A sub four to approve the order heretofore as Exhibit D without an award of damages."
Second.
Okay, Article Twenty Five's been moved and seconded, is there discussion? Can I guess there is discussion? Yes.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for taking the time to listen to me for a few minutes. My name is Michael Thomas, and I am in support for a yes vote on Article Twenty Five and Twenty Six. Uh, I have lived in Clearview Estates since nineteen ninety-six, and I purchased a house there nine years ago to raise my family in a great neighborhood that I really care about, and it's an awesome place to live. Um, I just wanna explain to you that the cul-de-sac at the end of Clearview was developed, um, and it extends beyond the town's right-of-way. So, I didn't create this situation, but I'm taking the responsibility here to offer a solution to the town to resolve this in a fair and cooperative way. Article Twenty Five is a straightforward fix. A yes vote would allow the town to discontinue the road. It will create a turnaround on the property, and it will replace it with a compliant hammerhead fully within the town's right-of-way at no cost to the town. This plan has already been conditionally approved by the select board and the planning board, so we're just here to finalize this with a yes vote. What I'm trying to let everybody know here is to be clear, voting on these articles does not stop any subdivision or possible development in the future. If this does fail tonight, then the town will move forward and have to use taxpayer dollars in order to remedy this non-conforming issue. Once that happens, anyone can come forward to the planning board with the plans to access the land and develop it. And that's exactly my point tonight. Voting no does not prevent a future development here. It just puts the cost back to the taxpayers. Voting yes fixes the same issue without costing the town a dime and does it respectfully and respecting my private property rights. I know a lot of people have said that this is misleading on social media, and I haven't made this about a future development because it's not. The vote does not approve any development. Yes, I will be coming back to the planning board to propose a development. However, though, this vote has nothing to do with that and is not contingent upon it. It does not approve a development, and it is not connected in any way at all. For over a year, I have worked with the town in good faith. I've revised plans, I've answered any, every question. I've been to multiple public hearings, I've spent a lot of money, and I've worked with the town manager, town attorney and both boards to get this conditionally approved to where it is now. The boards have approved this conditionally based on tonight's vote because it is a responsible approach to clear up a problem that has been there for a long time. This vote is only required because that is how a town road is discontinued in Arundel, is through a town vote. I'm a father, my two kids are over there right now. And I always tell my son, we don't quit, we don't give up, and we fight for what's right. And I'm here right now to stand up for my rights and my property rights and fight for what's right, no matter how much pushback and no matter how much negative things have come to me and my family. I am here to stand up for what's right and property rights in this town. If these articles don't pass, the road stays where it is, overlapping private property and creating unnecessary confusion for years to come. So, I'm asking for your support, not just for me, but for a resolution that's fair, legal and taxpayer-friendly and protects property rights. A yes vote will remove the road from private land. It will give the town a compliant turnaround. It costs the town nothing and resolves a longstanding issue while keeping access for everyone. I also didn't know if the town manager or one of the selectmen um, would like to confirm that this plan has been fully vetted and has been conditionally approved by both boards for the town with this vote. Let's fix this right, the right way, and let's all move forward as a community together here. Thank you very much, please vote yes.
Thank you. Yes.
I also, um, I'd like to make a motion that we do this by a written ballot. It's a pretty controversial issue, um, and I think a written ballot would give a fair vote for everybody, so I'd like to make a motion that.
Let's, I'll, I'll recognize that motion when we get to the vote.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
There is no budgeted money that's coming out of my pocket to fix that. It is to fix a cul-de-sac if you can put a road in to an unapproved development. Property rights, gotta be careful there. Stirs up emotion, stirs up emotion. There's a lot of property owners, and if you wanna say your property rights, that's fine, we do, but we're also a community that for forty years have lived, some of us, myself and only ten, but where there are a road and a cul-de-sac that overlay some of our property, then we're okay with it. For example, one of the abutters on the cul-de-sac does not want this, wants the cul-de-sac to stay the way it is. Are we thinking of her property rights? People just bought property on the other side of the cul-de-sac, didn't expect a proposed road right to buy their, the property with a development behind it. Let's be careful when we're thinking property rights. Are we thinking it plural or singular? We should think of it plural if we're at a town meeting. The residents, um.
If I can get you a wrap-up in like thirty seconds?
Residents, um, and I've, I've been asked to speak for a handful of them, like, raise your hand so that you know about, we're not fighting for the microphone here. They've accepted the misplaced roads, they are fine with that. They are not going and proposing a change. I believe it's very clear if you look at the time spent, the flyers, the lawyers, the price of the road. This is clearly step one to an unapproved development. And please, look at it with an open mind, not any way you want for democracy, but open mind, please.
Thank you. Yes.
My name is Sarah Carrier, and I live at Fifty-Nine Clearview. I'm gonna read from here because I'm nervous, there's a lot of. I'm here tonight to speak as a member of a group concerned Arundel residents. I'm not sharing only my concerns, but many of theirs as well. As you may have guessed from the large attendance tonight, this issue is very important to us. This proposal is being presented as an easy and free solution to fix decades-old prob, property issue. But that's not what it is, it's a calculated strategy. It's an effort to repackage a rejected plan, sneak it through the back door in a different form. Let's be clear here, in our opinion, a vote in favor of this hammerhead and road discontinuance, Articles Twenty Five and Twenty Six, is a vote in favor of Michael Thomas's development. Both of these articles are really about creating an access point for a proposed housing development. His plan was rejected many months ago because he could not run an access road to a new development off of Laurel Loop, as it is in his original plan. But now, he's back with another plan. Make no mistake, this is not being done to the good of the town. Why would someone spend tens of thousands of dollars on legal findings, engineering plans and road construction uh, plans if they didn't expect something in return? This is not a civic favor, this is a calculated investment. I want to be very clear, though, we are not opposed to fixing the property line areas of the path. We are opposed to how it's being done, in private money to fund repairs to a potentially downed road, public road. Town roads are public infrastructure, that means they should be maintained by public funds, and that the public should have the right to decide how they are gonna go. When somebody bankrupts a road project on a town property or potential town property, it raises serious red flags. It creates a dangerous precedent, one where decisions are driven by those who can or to influence them and neighborhoods that can't self-reform, self-fund repairs that are left behind. It's also about fairness, transparency and public accountability. This is keeping public decisions in the hands of the public. The developer may say he's working with the town, but let's be honest, he didn't work with us. The community member is most affected. He worked around us and against us to get a specific outcome that benefits him financially. That's at the heart of our opposition. He's proud of the list of officials and consultants he's worked with, but most important, the most important conversations never happen. He's proud of the list of officials and consultants he's worked with, but most important, the most important conversations never happen. With all of us, his neighbors.
If you don't mind wrapping up.
Instead of frustrating. Phase for remedy this, he has just plowed right through and is asking for a vote to change our road, to change our neighborhood. We have all seen how fast cars drive down new roads and around corners on Limerick. They're not roads that you feel safe walking down with a child on a bike or taking your dog on a walk. Right now, we still have safety on Clearview and Maplewood. That's why we have to from other streets come to walk our neighborhood safely. If we allow this project to proceed, what happens to the next quiet neighborhood with undeveloped land nearby?
You, you need to wrap up.
And subdivision being transformed, coming right through your quiet neighborhood.
Okay, thank you. Yes, sir.
There we go, you hear me now?
Yeah.
This is Jeff D. Trumbull, I'm a resident of Arundel, moved in twenty sixteen, uh, lived here for ten years. Have two daughters, seven and four. Also trying to raise a family, right, it's not an easy thing to do. Uh, Mr. Thomas is definitely trying to tug at your heartstrings here and like I said previously. He's a, he's a great wordsmith. I got home one day, my girls get off the bus, my daughters are both crying. Because Mr. Thomas blocked the bus at the cul-de-sac.
Yeah.
The bus.
This isn't really relevant to the.
Absolutely. Why, how is it not relevant?
Well, I'll continue.
So I'm just trying to go to his point about being a, a community and he cares about the community. I, I don't see that, I, I haven't seen that. My daughters are both crying, our neighbor's daughter hit her head, there's a video of this, um, I was trying to stay out.
Wait, wait, whoa, no, no!
So my daughters are lying, okay, alright. My, I, I'm raising a family in the neighborhood and I have a right to speak.
Yeah, but.
Okay.
What, we're not talking about what happened to your family, we're talking about whether this road should be discontinued.
Okay.
Yes.
No.
Um. So I need two-thirds consent for, to allow the gentleman to speak. So, all those in favor of allowing, um, well, you wanna identify yourself?
Vote, come on.
Yeah, let's, let's keep this a little civil, okay, um. Okay, so, wait, stop, 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 please. Ken, no, we're gonna vote on this now. Who's in favor of allowing this non-resident to address the meeting? Thank you, opposed? Thank, alright, so two-thirds was required and so that motion fails. I'll recognize you, I'm sorry, you called the question.
My name is Lindsay Andrews.
One second, one second, I'm sorry, I had a motion to call the question before I recognize you, so I'm sorry.
I'm patient.
So, uh, gentlemen, move the question, is there a second? Okay, so we are voting on whether to stop discussion and vote.
Valid?
Yeah, yeah, I'll get to that, okay. So, the motion is to stop discussion and vote on article twenty-five. It requires a two-thirds vote. All those in favor of stopping discussion and voting on twenty-five? Thank you, opposed, I'm sorry, oh, yeah, okay, I just, you know, alright, so the motion fails and I'll recognize you.
My name is Lindsay Andrews, I moved to Clearview Drive when I was fourteen years old, so I've been living there for fifteen years now. I grew up really enjoying the street and getting to spend a lot of time on my bike, walking my dog and all that. If we were to put in this road, that would cause a throughway, that would be dangerous for our children. That's all.
Thank you. I'll recognize the gentleman in the red.
My name's Rich Gannon and I serve on the planning board. I wanna make something perfectly clear to everybody here. Mr. Thomas presented this motion to us to go through the process. We went through the process, we affirmed the process, not because we agreed with it. But because he met the requirements of the ordinance, which is what we are supposed to do. So when it's, when he says that he has our backing, that's not true. He met the agreements that needed to be done in the land use ordinance and we authorized it to go forward to the selectment. The reason that it came to us is because the first time Mr. Thomas came to us, there was a, an issue in that neighborhood. And we were under, under notice from the board of selectment that we could not hear any problem that had something going on. So we did not. He then went out and he found a way to fix that problem and he came to us and he said, can we do this? So yes, he can do that. That does not mean he has the support of the board.
Thank you. Yes.
My name is Diane Robbins-Mokas and while I don't live in this development, I have really good friends that live there. And really good friends of my child that live in this development. And this came up a year ago when somebody said, can they do this? And I said, is it town road? And they go, yep, and I'm like, no. This, two, these two articles, they're, they're being sent out to you as being correcting a mistake. But this mistake contains twenty-three thousand eight hundred and fifty-five square feet of property, which is over a half an acre. Why do I care? It's because I have friends there. Don't be fooled, there is no current road connection from Clearview to Dutch Elm. On the original subdivision plans where Mr. Thomas wants to put this road. The only purpose of these two articles is for him to be able to put a road through for him to develop and profit. It appears his plan is to sell his current house in Clearview and build a new one on the golf course property. But this means he doesn't have to deal with the road next to the house or the hammerhead. In addition, all purchases of property required a title search before, therefore, he was aware of the consent agreement at the time he purchased the property. Because his deed clearly has the note, including the book and page. If you look at the consent agreement, it says, any portion of the traveled paved roads which are not located in the right of way of the roads. As accepted by the town as shown on the recorded plans must be conveyed to the town. And fee simple ownership so that the town has legal rights to all of the presently existing and traveled paved roads. This didn't happen, but he's not proposing to fix that either. The only fix he's proposing is to put in a road and get rid of the circle. Because he was told he can't build off, he can't put a road off a ham, off a circle and he could put a hammerhead. But that's, that's his fix, that's not our fix. And the subdivision plans have no notes of any roads on any of the lots in that area. The stipulation of Clearview says that you can't even have fencing within seventy-five feet of the next lot. Which he's not in compliance with or wasn't at the time I went on the sidewalk. But he's proposing to put this road on his next door neighbor's line. Which means they're gonna have a front road and a side road. He purchased this property in two thousand and sixteen from someone who had owned it for twenty years, never had an issue. He never had an issue with it either, didn't try to fix it until he wanted to profit by buying, buying property off from the golf course. And building a road through the cul-de-sac, which is probably a lot cheaper than building a road from Limerick Road up to where he wants to go.
If I can get you to wrap, have you wrap up, please.
So this appears to be an issue with approval of subdivisions, I don't like how it was done, I appreciate what was said. But this has been there for a long time and the fix needs to happen from the town, but he didn't offer to make a fix to what was on his deed. He only wants to fix it to serve his own purpose, thank you.
Anybody? Anybody who hasn't spoken wants to. Did you speak before? I'm gonna, I'm gonna recognize this gentleman here before you, but I'll recognize you afterwards.
Hey, I'm Paul Wolf, uh, live in, um, Pine, on Pinewood Circle, been here since ninety-seven, ninety-eight?
Ninety-eight.
Ninety-eight. Um, this article's got me really confused. I don't know what's going on, it's private property, right? He owns it? He wants, yeah, wherever it is, all this other stuff, I don't know about his development, I don't know his behavior. I don't know any of that, I don't need to know any of that. This is America, man, he's got property and the town's got it and he wants it back, it's pretty simple, I don't know, I'm confused, what the? It seems like a personality thing's going on here, you're not paying attention to the facts. No, alright, well, like I said, I'm confused, you know? It seems pretty simple to me, but then I'm a simple guy, so, alright, thanks.
Thank you. Sir.
Be back there.
Yeah. Please.
Hello, uh, my name is Kevin Vigno and I'm not a good public speaker, so, um, I. I live in Clearview Estates and like many of you, I love the town, Clearview neighborhood. One of my favorite, favorite parts has always been the cul-de-sac. Back in ninety-three, I was working with Marcel Dubois who purchased land in the cul-de-sac. We even had it under contract for two years. During this time, I discovered what many people have known for years. The road was not built exactly where it was supposed to be, it was slightly off and there was well-known, it was well-known throughout the residents. All town officials even back then. When I couldn't buy the cul-de-sac due to, uh, several field sold tests, I bought my second choice, lot one sixty-four Clearview Drive. The town knew that the road was off in multiple locations throughout Clearview. It affected at least four lots which were impacted by the roadway, lots fifteen, fifty-two, fifty-four and fourteen. Being in the subdivision, uh. Being in the cul-de-sac were impacted. You can reference Clearview Estates, subdivision one dash three, Plan Amendment in ninety-five. Denise and I met with the town about our options because the road and pins located were off. Then in February of ninety-five, the town passed an ordinance stating that no lots could be sold or built upon unless the owner signed the consent agreement. Allowing the town to have ownership rights and be able to maintain the misplaced sections of the road on both Clearview and Maple. My wife signed the agreement which gave the town back the road, which everyone used. In ninety-seven, Steve and Lonnie purchased the land in the cul-de-sac and built their house that is there now. I, I had, I told Steve York about the road, the pin location being off a bit. With the road being a town road since nineteen eighty-eight, the York sign, the York signed a town document. Abiding by all existing ordinance of the town of Arundel. The, the town signed the document as well. This should have satisfied the, the commitment, the commitment agreement to the road, sorry. The town had what it needed, we thought this problem was fixed. Twenty years goes by, Steve sells the house to Michael Thomas, now we're here tonight. Michael says it's about saving taxpayer money and building the hammerhead. At no cost to the town or taxpayers. But we haven't had a problem with the road, it hasn't cost the taxpayers any money in the nearly forty years. The town has maintained and plowed all the roads in this development. There is no problem that needs to be fixed. Let's be honest, it's really about to save, let's be honest. If you really want to save taxpayer money, the answer is simple, leave it the way it's been for forty years. I really didn't want to get involved to speak, but this vote really matters for us. And this is why I'm, uh, voting no, thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
Hi, my name is Roseanne Karp and I'm a resident of Clearview Drive in Arundel. Um, I just have a, just a few short bullet points and it all just pertains to the road. Um, the current cul-de-sac has provided a safe, efficient and proper road. As a continuous loop that does not require any additional maneuvers to traverse. A hammerhead would change this dynamic negatively. Meaning, especially in terms of, you know, school buses, transportation. Large vehicles, emergency vehicles, it is not a straightforward singular road that has a continuous direction. You have to back up, the good old three-point turn, just to get off the road. The town has assumed management from my minimal understanding of this road for at least thirty years, if not more. Maintaining it as needed and providing town services, indicating the town has control of the road and not a private owner. This begs the question then, if the town, if this is a town recognized road. Why would the town look at having a private individual pay for something that you're responsible for? That does not come clean. It's, it, it's very concerning. The solutions, and there are solutions, is to correct and formalize the consent agreement. That has been in use since nineteen, what, eighty-five, nineteen ninety-five? And this would provide the sanest, safest and most appropriate response. The town may need to recognize and make adjustments to abutters' property taxes if that land is being included in their tax rate. If the town would take the ownership of that cul-de-sac, the pro, the road that evidently abuts or is cited on individuals' property lines. And, um, I think that, yes, development will happen, it's a given, it's needed. But that doesn't mean that we need to destroy a perfectly correct and appropriate road. To make accommodations for new development. If you wanna build a development there, then you need to look for a different entry point to bring a road in. Instead of destroying what we already have, thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
Ladies and gentlemen, my name's Todd Shea, I'm the bad guy that raised my hand and wanted to move the question. And the reason that I did it is look around the room, how many people raised their hands to not allow Mr. Thomas's attorney to speak? Almost everybody, so you guys have this thing wrapped up, I used to be the town manager here, I know the room, you're gonna win. So move the question so that we can go on to the next one, thank you.
Was that a motion to move the question?
I don't know much about what's going on there.
A second.
The thing I wanna say is, we're voting on a road to be fixed regardless. Those, the, if we have people that love their Clearwater like they do, why can't we have, we shouldn't even be bringing the. We shouldn't even be talking about the development. We vote on this one way or the other, the development, you can always fight that later. So I'd say we move things forward, get this done and then deal with the, I don't know that man. I, I, this is the very first time I have ever spoke at a public hearing. But you have to understand, we can fight that later. That we, you're bringing the issue up now during a meeting that we, we're trying to settle. You know, so he gets his road, you know what I mean? I, I, I just want you to think about that, that, you know, we got chances to fight that development later. Right now, we're talking about, can we change the road?
Okay, thank you.
Question?
No, they're uncoupled. Okay, so the motion is to move the question. I've put this gentleman off before to allow others to speak, so I'm gonna give you an opportunity to speak. He gets to speak because I put him off to let other people speak in front of him. I'm not gonna deny him the opportunity to speak.
I'll be really quick. The town gets a new road at no cost. It does not approve a development. I've been honest about this process. It's a good deal. It's a new road. I'm really disappointed by all the personal attacks here that have been brought up. A development is not guaranteed and a development won't be stopped by this vote. I will be back whether this passes or not. Thank you.
Thank you, okay. So the motion is to move the question. Was there a second? I think there was. Okay, so again, two-thirds vote to stop discussion on 25 and vote on it. All those in favor? Thank you, opposed? Motion carries. We are now gonna vote and now there's a motion to vote by written ballot. The motion requires a majority vote, okay? And just, are the clerks prepared to deal with this? What's that? It's not debatable, but I... And again, I didn't... I'm not sure if I heard a second, so I asked for a second. Okay. So the motion is to vote on Article 25 by written ballot, like a yes/no on a slip of paper. Requires a majority vote. It's not debatable, so all those in favor of voting on 25 by written ballot, signify. Okay, opposed? Alright, so the motion for a written ballot fails. So now the motion... The question's been called. It's gonna be by a show of hands. So we're voting on Article 25. All those in favor of Article 25? Thank you, opposed? Thank you. So Article 25 fails. And Article 26 starts with if Article 25 is adopted. So I'd entertain a motion to pass over 26. So the motion is to pass over Article 26 because I don't think it has any relevance. All those in favor of passing over? Two-thirds vote? Opposed? Okay. So Article 26 is passed over. So now we're moving on to Article 24, revisiting. We're going back to Article 24? I'm sorry, there seems to be some discord. What's... Hey, can we come to order, please? Yes, sir. Hang on.
Folks, come on.
Yes, okay. So we're back to Article 24 and we are still discussing Article 24. So I'll recognize this gentleman. Folks, let's come to order. Let this man speak.
My name's Jim Rooney and I've lived on the corner of South Skillens Road and Laurel Lane for 46 years. When Laurel Lane was put in, there was a cross cover that was put in 100 feet up Laurel Lane and it was not put in deep enough. And what's happened is, my property is saturated with water. So I'm voting against adopting Laurel Lane and Oaku Terrace until that gets corrected. Terry's tried to fix it, but you can't make water run uphill. So that's what I have to say.
Okay, thank you. Race there? Yes, please, okay. Please, let's be quiet.
Hi, Susan Sennett. Lived on Laurel Lane since 1999. Laurel Lane originally was a private road and it was a dirt road that was not up to town standards. Before we all signed to have it become the road that it is so that Oak Ridge Terrace could be built, the town used to only have to go again, go in front of the select board to be approved as one. So we were promised, when we signed away to have this road built, that if it was up to town specs, it would come again in front of the select board and it would be guaranteed to be. So we were promised that. So then, the law... The rules changed and now it's come in front of you all. I have been going through this since 2020. 2020, I was promised that this would now be a non-issue. If I allowed this road to be paved and this buildings would be put on and these developments would happen. And now it's up in front of you all. I am asking to end this for me and actually allow it to be a town road. And I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm gonna recognize this gentleman. Well, you guys can fight it out.
I just have a simp... I just have a simple comment to make. The changes that Diane is suggesting are de minimis in nature. They have no lasting impact. I see no reason to go through the tedium of looking at every one of them and finding out what they... It was a mistake in a photocopy that bled through. I think we should just vote on the article.
Thank you. Yep?
Hello?
Yes.
Jerry Court. Jerry Court, Laurel Lane.
Hey, if folks want to talk, you can go outside, okay?
I've lived on Laurel Lane since 89, many years. I worked with a developer to put our road in. He did bring it 100% to town specs with a third party, completely with Roger Tassero and Terry Merrill for the entire thing. Alls we're asking for is Clearview was a private road, was brought to town, town accepted, you have a wonderful neighborhood. We want to see. That's it. We want a yes. We want our road taken over, just like Clearview. So we can have the same wonderful neighborhood you have. Got it, thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, oh, I was just... Hi, I'm gonna keep this as brief as I can. I'm Lisa Freitas. I live in Lot 4 on Oak Ridge Terrace. My husband and I were the first family to move in on the street. And, thank you, we love it there. And listening to all of you all talk tonight about your neighborhood, this is why we love this town. We just want what you have. Like you said, we just want a safe street. We have 30 kids on our street under the age of 13. Our street is a paradise. And we just want it to be safe and we want it to be plowed and we want the potential of having a bus stop for our kids. So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I'm gonna recognize... Selectman? Yeah, I'm gonna recognize this gentleman first.
I just want to be clear. There's a comment that was made that they were promised this town as a town road. There's no such thing. The select board would never do that. It's always been up to the town to vote to accept a town road. I just want to make sure it, you know, that's not what was happening. If that's a misstatement, right? Thank you.
Thank you.
That's not us.
If you're calling the question, this gentleman's been letting people go.
Second?
Do you want to say? Okay, so motion to call the question, it's been seconded. So again, two-thirds vote to stop. We're voting on stopping discussion on Article 24 and voting on it. So all those in favor? Thank you, opposed? Okay, so Article 24... Oh, no, we're stopping discussion. So now we're gonna... I'll get this right, I'll get it right. So now we're gonna vote on Article 24, okay? So all those in favor of Article 24, please raise your cards. Thank you, opposed? Thank you, so Article 24 passes. So now we're gonna move on to Article 3, which is why everyone came here. Yeah, so let's... I mean, I think a lot of people are gonna leave the room now, so I'm just gonna take a... Not a... We're not recessing, but I'm just gonna pause for a second to let the noise stop.
Hey, folks, if you want to talk, please move out so we can continue.
Yeah, go ahead. Alright.
I've never used the gallows today. Ridiculous, ridiculous. If you want to talk, go outside. You want to stay? Be quiet. So now we're left with the hardcore town meeting, folks. Alright. So we're on Article 3, okay? Article 3, shall the town approve an ordinance amendment entitled Amendment to the Arundel Land Use Ordinance, current section 5.7, Fire Protection 5.7.1, Authority 5.7.2, Residential Fire Protection Water Supply 5.74, Automatic Fire Sprinkler Systems 5.75, Cisterns and Fire Pond Standards, the text of the proposed revisions presented in Exhibit A.
Go move.
Second.
Now Article 3's been moved and seconded, is there discussion on Article 3? Yes?
Alright, I'm... Since they're all in one article, I'm gonna kind of tell you what my questions are. So, under the authority section, there was a change from 4 to 3. My question is, how are we going to track? Because this doesn't say it here. How are we gonna track what year that was made so that we know when people are coming in for permits? What plan they fall under? Because when we do a change in land use regulations, anything that was already subdivided or started prior to would not be subject to this. It would only be everything after we pass this rule. You can't impose this on somebody that had it before. I'm just trying to figure out how we know in this land use regulation, when it changed from 4 to 3 or when under the residential fire protection, it changed from 25 to 15? So that was my question. I just wanted to know how we're gonna document when these date changes and changes were done so we know when we're following the land use...
Is there someone who can answer that? Yes, sir.
Rich Canong, I'm the chairman of the planning board. These changes were made as the result of the fire chief coming to us and saying, "Here are things that need to be adjusted." Originally, it said for... His presentation said for... The ordinance said 3... It said from 4 to 7. So we said, "Well, that leaves the third house with nothing to cover them." So we dropped it down to say from 3 to 7. And in terms of the 2,500 feet, it's 2,500 feet now. This would get recorded as the change down to 1,500.
Okay? Okay? Any other questions or discussion on Article 3? Any other discussion, questions on Article 3? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor? Thank you, opposed? Okay, Article 3 passes as written. Article 4, shall the town approve an ordinance amendment entitled Amendment to the Street Design and Construction Ordinance, current section 1.4, 1.4.1, Sub-3, Citizen Physician to Town Legislative Body for Acceptance of a Street as a Townway, and current section 1.4.2.1, Application Procedure for a Townway Acceptance, the text of the proposed revisions presented in Exhibit P. Is there a motion?
Go move.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion on Article 4? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor of Article 4? Thank you, opposed? Okay, Article 4 passes as written. Article 5, shall the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $139,564 for the general government account? The select board recommends yes. The budget board recommends yes.
Second.
Yes, is there discussion on Article 5? Any discussion on Article 5? Okay, all those in favor? Thank you, opposed? Okay, Article 5 passes as written. Article 6, shall the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $1,151,743 for the town hall administration account? The select board recommends yes. The budget board recommends yes. Any discussion on Article 6? Yes?
Alright Keith, you ready? What's the mill rate? I'm sorry, but I can't vote on a budget if I don't know how it's gonna affect the mill rate.
Well, interesting question because...
No, because the school didn't pass.
No, well, that is, as well as we're in the middle of a value update to our properties here in town. So that is being done as we speak. So for me to speculate to you what I think the new town value will be and how it'll reflect on the tax rate will be a little more difficult. Right now, our tax rate is $17 per thousand and we have $591 million worth of value for the communities, for the properties in town. We suspect, and that was at, we thought probably 65 to 70%, the new values, the new statistical updates will bring us closer to probably 93 to 95%. So with the increase in values, we'd... There will be a decrease in your tax rate. Because what you pass here tonight will have... Will affect your tax rate. Speaking of that, I just want to let you all know that once, if you pass every one of these articles tonight, the municipal request that we're asking for goes up from last year to this year by $15,669 in total. So, you know, the budget board and the select board did a wonderful job. So to answer your question, I can't answer it completely. I don't know... I don't know what the RSU's gonna do yet. We'll have to wait. I mean, they were at $472,000. So that was a significant increase. So we'll see what happens after their next vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else on Article 6? Okay, all those in favor? Thank you, opposed? Okay, Article 6 passes as written. Article 7, shall the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $1,383,070 for the operations of the Arundel Fire Rescue Service Account? Select board and budget board recommend yes.
Second.
Any discussion on Article 7? Okay, all those in favor? Thank you, opposed? Article 7 passes as written. Article 8, shall the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $74,755 for the civil services account? Select board and budget board recommend yes.
Second.
Any discussion on Article 8? All those in favor? Thank you, opposed? Okay, Article eight passes as written. Article nine, shall the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of one million one hundred forty-three thousand four hundred fifty-five dollars for the public works department account? Select board and budget board recommend yes.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion on Article nine? Yes, sir.
Todd Chase, Senate Road, and I'd still say that we have the best road crew in York County, if not the entire state of Maine.
I hope that doesn't change with the retirement of Terry.
Anything else on Article nine? Okay, all those in favor? Thank you, opposed?
Can I make one comment before we move on to the next article? I just want to recognize, Todd talked about it a little bit, while you folks are here, twenty-eight years of service to the community. Terry Merrill will be retiring. I really want to thank him for his service and his mentorship with me as well. Appreciate it a lot, Terry, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Article ten, shall the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of three hundred seventy thousand nine hundred fifty-six dollars for the town transfer recycling account? Select board and budget board recommend yes.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion on Article ten? All those in favor? Thanks, opposed? Okay, Article ten passes as written. Article eleven, shall the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of one hundred thirty-three thousand nine hundred ninety-five dollars for the general assistance account? Select board and budget board recommend yes.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion on Article eleven? All those in favor? Thank you, opposed? Article eleven passes as written. Article twelve, shall the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of five hundred seventeen thousand six hundred thirty-seven dollars for the recreation account? Select board and budget board recommend yes.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion on Article twelve? All those in favor? Thank you, opposed? Article twelve passes as written. Article thirteen, shall the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of two hundred thirty thousand dollars for sheriff patrol services? Funding covers two patrol officers for a total of eighty hours per week. Select board and budget board recommend yes.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion on Article thirteen? All those in favor? Thank you, opposed? Article thirteen passes as written. Article fourteen, shall the voters authorize the Board of Selectmen upon majority vote of the full Board of Selectmen to exceed by no more than five percent annually the amount authorized for each account approved in Articles five through thirteen above, so long as the amount spent for the sum total of those articles does not exceed the total appropriations approved for those articles?
So move.
Second.
Any discussion on Article fourteen? All those in favor? Thank you, opposed? Okay, Article fourteen passes as written. I might entertain a motion to waive the reading of the bullets on Article fifteen?
So move.
Yes.
Okay, the motion that I sort of begged for was to waive the reading of A through G. All those in favor? Thank you, opposed? Okay, that motion passes. So Article fourteen, shall the town vote to join the main public employees retirement system? Main PERS as a, yes. Sorry, thank you. I haven't said school board yet. Article fifteen, shall the town vote to join the main public employees retirement system? Main PERS as a participating local district effective August first, two thousand twenty-five and expend the sum of seventy-seven thousand three hundred fifty-five dollars in additional cost to cover this proposed benefit with the following conditions, A through G, that I won't read? The select board and budget board recommend yes.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion on Article fifteen? Yes, sir.
I just want to make sure I understand this correctly. I can't, I agree, I can't understand this correctly because it. So we're now going to be paying into social security as well as into main PERS for our employees.
That is correct.
Okay. That's, I want to make sure I understood it so that when I vote, no, I'll know what I was voting for.
Any other discussion on Article fifteen? Okay, all those in favor? Thank you, opposed? Article fifteen passes as written. Article sixteen, shall the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of six hundred fifty thousand dollars for the road construction reserve account? Select board and budget board recommend yes.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion on Article sixteen? Yes.
Chip Bassett, I'm not suggesting it for this budget, but I think in future years it would be helpful to, when we're appropriating six hundred and fifty thousand or more, to have some line item detail provided, which projects cost how much? Thank you.
Thank you for the comment. Any other discussion on Article sixteen? Okay, all those in favor? Thank you, opposed? Article sixteen passes as written. Article seventeen, shall the town vote to appropriate the sum of six hundred eighty-five thousand dollars from undesignated fund balance surplus for various capital reserve accounts? Municipal office equipment and computers, thirty thousand dollars. Transfer station capital equipment and repairs, thirty thousand dollars. Recreation bus and playground replacement, twenty-five thousand dollars. Public works equipment and building, three hundred thousand dollars. Fire station equipment, three hundred thousand dollars. Select board and budget board recommend yes.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion on Article seventeen? Yes.
Just a clarification. This expenditure of undesignated fund, well, this allocation of undesignated fund balance, is it going into reserve funds to be held? Or is it being spent on these purposes?
It'll be placed into a capital reserve accounts as identified and then spent out accordingly.
Spent out during the upcoming fiscal.
I don't believe, no. The whole intent for a lot of that was to begin to set aside some funding in the anticipation of further development of building, construction and so forth.
Thank you.
Anything else on Article seventeen? Okay, all those in favor? Thank you, opposed? Article seventeen passes as written. Article eighteen, shall the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of nine thousand five hundred dollars for the Eastern Trail account? Select board and budget board recommend yes.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion on Article eighteen? All those in favor? Thank you, opposed? Article eighteen passes as written. Article nineteen, shall the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of fifteen thousand eight hundred ninety-five dollars for social service agencies? Select board and budget board recommend yes.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion on Article nineteen? All those in favor? Thank you, opposed? Article nineteen passes as written. Article twenty, shall the town raise, vote, shall the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of twenty thousand dollars for the Kennebunk Free Library? Select board and budget board recommend yes.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion on Article twenty? Yes.
Margaret Sylvain, I'm just wondering, how many people are using the library now? I mean, how many people in the town? Good answer, good answer. Yeah, how many people are using it now? Do we know?
Does anybody have that answer or able to take a stab at that? I don't know, except for the people that, yes.
Okay, the reason I ask is twenty thousand just seemed like a lot to me based on where we started years ago. Granted, it was many years ago. And I called the Kennebunk Library yesterday and how much for an out of town? And it was forty dollars. So that's five hundred. Are there more than five hundred or whatever people that are using that? Okay, I'm good, thank you.
Any other discussion on Article twenty? All those in favor? Thank you, opposed? Article twenty passes as written. Article twenty-one, shall the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of two thousand five hundred dollars for the Kennebunk, Kennebunk Port, Arundel Chamber of Commerce? Select board and budget board recommend yes.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion on Article twenty-one? All those in favor? Thank you, opposed? Thank you, Article twenty-one passes as written. Article twenty-two, shall the town vote to appropriate the sum of three million forty-one thousand ninety-nine dollars from estimated revenues to be used to reduce the tax commitment as follows? Taxes, commitment, one million two hundred sixty-nine thousand nine hundred eighty-four dollars. Licenses and permits, one hundred forty-seven, three hundred dollars. One hundred forty-seven thousand three hundred dollars. Intergovernmental revenue, nine hundred ninety-two thousand six hundred fifteen dollars. Service charges, six hundred thirty-one thousand two hundred dollars. Select board and budget board recommend yes.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion on Article twenty-two? Yes.
Step up the mic, please. What this means to reduce the tax burden.
Right, they have funds collected throughout the year. The biggest one is the one that says taxes, usually excise tax that you pay for your car. And then any license or permits that the town issues. What we do is we take that money in and with your approval tonight, we will use that to reduce the amount that we'll ask you to pay for your taxes. For taxes, for money to come out of your pocket to pay for our municipal government. So essentially, what it is, is we just take it off the top and anticipate using it. So you don't have to pay for it through your property taxes.
So this is fees from other areas to reduce property taxes?
Correct.
Okay.
Any other questions on, or discussion on Article twenty-two? Okay, all those in favor? Thank you, opposed? Article twenty-two passes as written. Article twenty-three, shall the town vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to expend up to five hundred thousand dollars from undesignated fund balance to be used when setting the municipal tax rate? Select board and budget board recommend yes.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion on Article twenty-three? Yes, sir.
Keith, what is the current undesignated fund balance approximately? Todd Chase, Senate wrote.
Presently, it's around five million dollars. We have to keep twenty percent in our budget to cover our commitments to the school, to the county, which is about two million dollars. So we have three million dollars in that account to, as undesignated fund balance at this time.
Yes.
Yes, I will. Thank you.
Any other discussion on Article twenty-three? No? You're just trying to escape? Okay? Quietly, discreetly. All right, all those in favor of Article twenty-three? Thank you, opposed? Article twenty-three passes as written.
Mr. Moderator.
There's second.
Yeah, that's what I was going to make.
Pull your thunder. Okay, so the motion is to, the motion is to take up Article twenty-seven through thirty-eight as a group with one vote and hear less from me. So all those in favor of voting on Articles twenty-seven through thirty-eight as one in one vote? Thank you, opposed? Okay, you want to hear me talk? Okay, Article, so that motion carries. So now I also entertain a motion to waive the reading of these articles.
So move.
Yes, second.
Right. All those in favor of not hearing me read all these articles? Thank you, opposed? I won't take it personally. Okay, so we're taking up, we're discussion on Articles twenty-seven through thirty-eight? Any articles, any discussion? Okay, seeing, yes?
No, it should be seven and a half percent and three and a half percent.
I think it's an obvious typo. Any other comments? Anything else, Articles twenty-seven through thirty-eight? Okay, so we're voting on all of those articles en masse, all those in favor? Thank you, opposed? Okay, Articles twenty-seven through thirty-eight are all approved as written. That's the end of our agenda for the night. Thank you, everyone, for participating and naming nicely. I'd entertain a motion to adjourn? Second? All those in favor? Thank you, opposed?